Mr. Chairman.
Call to order, Town of Fairfield zoning board of appeals, audit two, two thousand twenty-three. First going to take up our executive session, we have two items on the agenda. And that is the first is approval of the minutes for Thursday, July twelfth, two thousand twenty-three. Entertained a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Jane. Is there a second?
I got it.
Okay, I can't second it.
It's me and you, Jane.
All right, discussion? I hear none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, a wave from, uh, Mr. Avon.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. A motion carries. Second is approval of secretary's fee. Entertained a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Katie. Is there a second?
Second.
Jane? You're gonna have to start timing it. I know there's a little delay, but you're not gonna win this time. Discussion? Hearing none. Bring it to a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Raise your hand from afar, okay? Mr. Avon raises hand in favor. None opposed. That motion carries. We'll reconvene working session after the public hearing, and that time we'll be voting all the all the matters that go forward today. Just want to announce, just in case someone did not notice, but number eleven, which was on our original agenda, seven fifty Post Road is going to be continued to September seventh, right? September seventh for that hearing. Reconvene working session at the end of the public hearing. I'll call this to order once my vice chairman, Mr. Keegan arrives.
Chairman, we are all set.
All right, great. Call back to order, Fairfield zoning board of appeals, our public hearing. Reminder, if anyone's come in, number eleven that was on our original agenda, which is seven fifty Post Road, is not going forward. That's going to be continued to September seventh. So I'm about to call the remaining items in the order that they're listed. But when I first call the matter, I want the applicant, his or her agent, to come up to the podium there, and at that time you present your case. During your presentation, and only during your presentation, is the time for you, if you have anything to share. It's not required to share. It's not a show and tell. You know, not required. But if you have something to share, petitions, photographs, you know, do it during your presentation, not while I'm making the call for each particular item. After the applicant, his or her agent is done presenting their case, we might have some questions for you, the board. We may not. So, you know, don't be nervous about the questions, and don't be concerned if we don't ask questions, all right? That means we feel satisfied and understand what you're seeking. After that, I will then ask if there's anyone that has a position on that particular application. I first invite those who may be in favor. If you have some people here, neighbors, or something that want to speak in favor, or even maybe someone from the audience, you don't even know, and they want to speak in favor of your particular application, I invite them to go after you. Then I ask if there's anyone that opposes an application. And if there's anyone that opposes it, they also can come up and they can speak in opposition to your application. If there is any opposition, I would then allow the agent or his or her, the applicant or his or her agent, to address those comments. Now, that is a rebuttal time period. It's a time for you to address the comments in opposition. It's not a time for you to restate. If you forgot to say something in the original statement, that's okay, but just, you know, try to keep it as a rebuttal format. This meeting and hearing is being taped. That's required by law. And what the law is, we have to create a record. So if someone has a problem, if there is an appeal, we need to have a clear, understandable record. That's why I make certain instructions. Please don't be coming up here while I'm making the call. And only one person can speak at a time. Anyone who does speak comes up to the podium. If there's people that speak remotely, they're welcome as well, but you need to give your name and address. And for the remote people, if you have comments, I will, you know, give plenty of time. You gotta give us, raise your hand, do something, unmute yourself, let us know that you need to be heard, and I'll take them in order. And anyone who has comments, the zoning board of appeals. There's a set of rules, it's called the regulations, the zoning regulations in town. And that's the rules that we look at. And you, most of you, are asking for some type of forgiveness of those particular rules relating to your particular property, all right? So we're addressing that. We're not addressing sanitation. We're not addressing sewer systems. We're not addressing the electrical system. We're not addressing anything to do with the actual structure of the house unless it violates those particular rules. That's what we're looking at. We're not looking at traffic, okay? So that's, you know, what we're focused on. The regulation that they're seeking an exception to or a variance from, and how your property fits into that, and whether we should apply that particular rule to your property or allow some forgiveness and leniency of that rule to your particular property. So if you have comments, in favor or against, keep that in mind. Because if you go too far off the point, I'm gonna, my right as chairman to restrict your comments at any time. Any applicants or anyone who's interested? We will, after the public hearing, we'll take a short break. We'll reconvene, and at that time, we're gonna vote. There's five voting members for the zoning board of appeals. In order for your application to be granted, or the application that you're interested in to be granted, you need a super majority. You need four people to vote in favor of it. If it's only a three to two simple majority, that application is denied. If you can't stay afterwards for that, I understand everyone has obligations, and that's fine. There's no, I'm not gonna keep track. I'm not gonna be taking attendance. That person left. That person stayed. There's no extra credit for staying. I think it's helpful for anyone who's interested, obviously the applicant, most importantly, to stay and listen because we'll have discussion, or we may have discussion. There's gonna be, there might be some comments. And, you know, whether you're interested in it in favor or against it, you might learn something as to why we voted the way we did, and I think that's useful. If you can't stay, and you obviously will want to find out as soon as possible, you contact the zoning office tomorrow, and you could probably ask them. They're pretty nice people that we deal with. They'll probably tell you, this is what they thought, this is what they said. But I think it's better to hear it for yourself.
That's correct.
If an application for waiver is granted, it's not gonna be valid until it's recorded on our land records, okay? So it's of no use if we granted it and it doesn't show up in the town clerk's office and get recorded. So you need to bring or send a check, sixty dollars made out to the Town of Fairfield, and send it in or bring it to the zoning office Wednesday or later following the meeting. Any waiver involving construction, whether it's for a new dwelling, an addition, home alteration, we require an ASB before a certificate of zoning compliance or a certificate of occupancy can be provided. And I'm gonna go in the order that they appear. General Dockett, our first item that we have, forty-six Sleepy Hollow Road, map one-two-five, parcel two-seven-one. Petition of Vincent and Lauren DeFina for a variance of zoning regulation, section five-point-two-point-four, to reduce the sum of two sideline setbacks to twenty feet, currently forty-five-point-four feet, proposing twenty-one feet. Permission to construct a two-story addition with attic premises A-zone. Attorney Fallon, this is you.
It is indeed, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, members of the board. For the recommend, it's John Fallon. I'm an attorney in Fairfield, and I'm pleased to be representing Vinnie and Lauren DeFina, who are seated right in the first row. They own the property at forty-six Sleepy Hollow, which is the subject of this application. Lauren, in fact, grew up just a few blocks away on Pemburn Drive. So her strong roots are very much in this neighborhood, and that's an important undercurrent and underpinning of this application. She remembers all of her years there as a child. She knows what a wonderful neighborhood it is. That's in two thousand and nine, when she was able to purchase her first home here at forty-six Sleepy Hollow. That was a very exciting opportunity. The DeFinas have lovingly maintained the property and made several aesthetic updates to the exterior and the interior. During the same period of time, they've watched the neighborhood transform from several similar capes to larger homes built to accommodate growing families. The first time that I went out to visit the DeFina property, I originally, for many years, lived on Rock Major Road, and I was surprised by the changes to the neighborhood, and so much so that I wish Mr. Attorney Russo was here today because I'm stealing a page from his book, and you can all tell when you see him. We took some photographs that I just wanted to share with you, and Matt will scroll through them, that just gives you a sense of this neighborhood. Right now, the DeFina house is really the only remaining original cape in the neighborhood. And as you scroll down, what you'll see are, first, there's ten Sleepy Hollow. You can see the changes that have occurred. You also have hard copies of this as well, showing the construction that allowed a two-car garage. Thirty Sleepy Hollow is another one that we showed. Construction again into a colonial with a two-car garage. Sixty Sleepy Hollow, which is immediately adjacent to the property, as you may know when you maybe went out there to look at the field visit, is also under construction. And there were variances granted to facilitate that new house and its two-car garage. The next one is eighty-two Sleepy Hollow Road, again documenting a transforming sense of the neighborhood. And again, eighty-five Sleepy Hollow, which did receive a variance to establish a two-car garage. And you can see the nineteen, twenty-fifteen and the twenty-twenty-three. Seventy-one Sleepy Hollow, again, the transformation of that cape from two thousand and fifteen to the current with the two-car garage. Fifty-three Sleepy Hollow, which is presently being knocked down and in the course of a new construction being built there. Twenty-eight Sleepy Hollow is another example. Then you go over quickly, and I don't have a whole lot more of these because I don't wanna hit Mr. Russo's reputation. But we have Nutmeg Lane. That's the adjacent street. Again, you can see the transformation at seventy-one Nutmeg, eighty-five Nutmeg, one-oh-one Nutmeg, and then again, the panoramic shot of one-fifteen and one-thirty-five. So the neighborhood has changed substantially. In the past, in addition to those houses, we didn't, I didn't get photographed, but I do have, and you can pass them down. These are variances that have been fairly recently granted by the board to facilitate similar construction at one-twenty-one and one-twenty-five University Drive, which is in the neighborhood. So there's two pieces of paper, and there was one for each of you. So that's the neighborhood. Now, five years ago, Vinnie and Lauren married, and they started a family. They now have two children. Finley is two, and Kara is six months. And they have seriously outgrown their cape, which has no garage and only one bathroom. They considered moving, but they were ultimately driven by their love of their home and this neighborhood in particular, to construct a new residence on the property rather than leave their home. And that is what's before you here. Sleepy Hollow is a perfect street for them. They love that neighborhood. It's in Lauren's roots, and it's a wonderful family neighborhood, and they want to stay there. And so they've come to you with this application. Let's talk about the application. To facilitate the construction, they seek only a single variance. They request approval to reduce the total of the side property line setbacks from twenty-five feet to twenty-one feet. I want to emphasize that in designing their home with Ed Clemente, who is here, our talented architect, they were very, very sensitive to the neighborhood and to the substantive regulations which we govern under. Therefore, you'll note that they're in total compliance with this new construction with regard to all other aspects of the zoning regulations, and most especially, coverage and maximum building floor area that will be under the allowed amount in the zone. Their intention, as I said, is to utilize the existing foundation as part of their proposed new residence, which is shown on the plan submitted there with will include the dwelling and an attached garage with room above. Ed Clemente is here. Our architects, should you have any questions with regard to the specifics of the architectural plans. So that is the background. Let's look at the legal underpinnings, the legal analysis which you must make. Under Connecticut general statutes eight-dash-six, you have to make two findings. One, that what we are proposing will not substantially affect the comprehensive zoning plan. And number two, that there are factors with regard to the property that establish a hardship basis for the granting of the variances. With the first part of the test, I cite the Egan case in my material, where our appellate court has said that if the use to be made is a permitted use in the zone and/or consistent with other uses in the area, then the first part of the test is met. There's not gonna be any change to the use of the property. It will continue to be used as a single-family residence. And as I hope I pointed out with the photograph, certainly what we seek to do here is very consistent with the character of the neighborhood as it's evolved. And as I said before, too, under Ed's talented hand and working closely with the DeFinas, the new home, I think, is very attractive in design. It's gonna harmonize with the character of the neighborhood and represents a very significant aesthetic improvement benefiting the entire neighborhood. And in that regard, Vinnie and Lauren went to their neighbors, and I have a petition that's been signed by all the adjacent neighbors and some beyond. This is the original, but somehow got a little, but there it is. So I hope all those factors satisfy the statutory first part of the test. With regard to hardship, as I said before, it is their plan to build on the existing foundation as part of the plans for this new home. They do wish to attach a garage. The house currently has no garage, and that is not an easy situation with their growing family. Taking into consideration the location of the existing foundation and their wish to accommodate the attached garage, that's what triggers the need for the single variance here, which is a minor modification to some of the setback requirements. I cite in my material cases from our Supreme and appellate court, where it's held that in reviewing an application for a variance pertaining to side yard setbacks, the board can take into consideration with regard to hardship the pre-existing location of a structure on the property. That is certainly relevant here because, again, the foundation is there, and if they're gonna have a garage, a functioning garage for two cars, they do need the variance that's requested. It is driven by maintaining the foundation. So in summary, and subject any questions that you might have from me or Mr. Clemente, it's a very attractively designed new home. It is going to harmonize and enhance the character of the neighborhood, which has evolved and transformed over the last two decades. It's an architectural enhancement to the property, as noted by the neighborhood support that we've received. And the proposal and the additional space are gonna provide the DeFinas to remain in their neighborhood, to remain in a home where they can raise their children. This is their lifetime home. It's come full circle for Lauren, and they want to stay here. And they've been respectful, I think, in every way of the regulations pertaining to coverage and total floor area, which will be in compliance with the provisions of the regulations. So we hope you'll be as excited and pleased by this proposal as the DeFinas are, and we'd be pleased to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Attorney Fallon. Board have any questions? No, remotely as well. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone that has opposition to the application, forty-six Sleepy Hollow Road? All right, I'm gonna close the hearing on forty-six Sleepy Hollow Road. Thank you, Attorney Fallon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Number two is fifty-one Nichols Street. Map one-eight-two, parcel seven-zero-five. Petition of Rosemarie and Michael Strickland for a variance of zoning regulation, section five-point-two-point-four, to reduce the street line setback on a corner lot from twenty feet, currently sixteen-point-seven feet, proposing sixteen-point-seven feet. Permission to construct a second-floor addition with attic and to make the home be in a compliant premises, B-zone.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Mike Strickland. My wife and I live at fifty-one Nichols Street with our family. We moved in about eight years ago, kind of as a starter home, and love Fairfield. I'm a Texas transplant. She's from Easton. And we want to stay here. And we are outgrowing our home. It's a one-story ranch, two-bedroom. And we would like to construct a second story in keeping with the aesthetic of the neighborhood. Certainly not gonna be the biggest house on the block. That's not what we're going for. But we're looking, very, very much looking forward to being able to, you know, keep our roots in Fairfield.
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Strickland?
So what are you doing to make it be in a compliant?
Filling in our basement, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mrs. Strickland? All right, I'll open up to other people. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of the application, fifty-one Nichols Street? Is there anyone in opposition to fifty-one Nichols Street application? There are no comments. I'll close the hearing on fifty-one Nichols Street. Thank you very much, Mr. Strickland. Number three, Three Sedan Terrace, map three-one, parcel five-four. Petition of Matthew and Angela DeFina for a variance of zoning regulation, section five-point-two-point-four, to reduce the street line setback from thirty feet, currently twenty-one-point-six feet, to open porch and eighteen-point-nine feet to stairs, proposing twenty-six, twenty-one-point-six feet to addition and eighteen-point-nine feet to stairs. Permission to construct a one-story addition with open front porch and stairs, premises A-zone.
Hello, everybody. My name is Matt Pacini. My wife Angie and I live at Three Sedan Terrace. We have lived there for three years. And a little bit of backstory is, two weeks before we moved into the house, we had a small fire on what was then a three-season porch. Not ideal. Thankfully, the fire was only cosmetic damages, and we could move in, and we've been living in the house. It was fine. But upon further investigation of that porch, we realized that it wasn't up to current codes. And we would have to do more than just kind of replace what had already been there. So what this plan is, is proposing to tear down the porch and rebuild, not a fully enclosed porch, half-enclosed, half-open. But we would be maintaining the original footprint of the property and not changing it at all.
All right. Is the board have any questions for Mr. Pacini, and we have your history in the file already?
Thank you, good.
I have just a question. Can you just state that the hardship is? The hardship that you're fired to have in order to grant the grant?
Oh, I'm not, I don't necessarily understand that question, to be honest with you.
We make our decision based on legal hardship, which should have been defined in paperwork that you should have gotten from the process. The law that's in place.
You wanna hear me now, right there? That's the application.
Thank you.
Sure.
What makes you think about your property that thinks you should, that makes you think you should get this done?
Well, in my mind, we're not, we're replacing the porch as it is. We're not, we're not adding to the footprint or on either side or anything like that. So, yeah, I'm not sure if, I'm not sure what would be unique about it. Can you, I'm not sure what you mean by that question.
Do you want to replace something that is not to code and
Correct.
it may not be stable?
Correct. Yeah. Yeah.
Any other questions?
This is the hardship would be that it's pre-existing.
We can discuss that. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Pacini? Okay. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application? Okay, why don't you get up there?
Good afternoon, right here. My name is Dr. Teo, and I actually am the company, Teo Eagle Run Home Improvements, that would hopefully do the work and get it underway. As Matt had mentioned, there was a fire on a pre-existing structure which really allows you main entry into the home. Without that structure being there, you would have to have a ladder to get into the front door off that three-season room that did exist. So by not replacing that and staying within the same footprint, even though it was many years ago that it was built, they wouldn't, they wouldn't have the access into the home that they need. So I, from my understanding, the thing that really has thrown this off a little bit were the stairs themselves. That, that was what gave us that extra, or that additional push that we needed or key that we needed. It was the stairs, not the actual structure, building structure itself, but the stairs themselves. So it's really just, you know, three steps to kind of resolve, you know, to the variance end of it. So I just wanted to clarify that because I, you know, when I did the application and I put the hardship on there, that that's what I had mentioned, and Matt wasn't probably aware of that, so. But I think in time, it's gonna be a consideration.
Does anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone that has opposition to the application, Three Sedan Terrace? All right, I'm gonna close the hearing on Sedan Terrace. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Our next item is number four. It is two-eighty-four Berkeley Road, map four-two, parcel one-fifty. Petition of Linda Chan for a variance of zoning regulation, section five-point-two-point-four, to reduce the street line setback to twenty feet, currently point-nine feet, proposing fifteen-point-nine, point-oh-nine feet. And section two, point-eight, point-one, point-one, to expand a non-conforming second dwelling located on one lot and to construct a dormer in the attic premises B-zone. Go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon. Jim Greenberg, one-oh-six Lake Street, West Haven. What we have on this property are two non-conforming pieces of property on one building lot. There's a two-family in the front, which is roughly twenty foot from the street setback. And way in the back on the right side, there's a single-family house back there. If anyone's driven by or did a field check, they're rough, rough. My client had no idea what she bought in November. It's way beyond her scope of work. So we went in there, pulled building permits, got it both houses. Two-eighty-four, two-ninety-two, to get up into, there was a bedroom on that third floor. To get up there, you had to walk up sideways. There was a staircase going up there. So what we're trying to do is put a little dormer on that side, on the right side of the house, which will give you legal headroom to get up onto access to the third floor, where there's gonna be two bedrooms. The, we're not touching, going beyond the existing footprint. We're not going above the ridge line. We're not changing the height of the house. We're not going to the right. It's just a little bump out just to give you headroom to go upstairs to the third floor. The hardship is two, two non-conforming structures on one lot. And the house was built over a hundred years before, it predates current zoning regulations. That's the big one.
All right, Mr. Greenberg. Board have any questions for Mr. Greenberg? All right, hearing no questions. Or anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application, Berkeley Road?
Yes.
Go ahead, sir. You can stay there if you want, or you can go up.
All right.
You just gotta speak loud.
I live next door, and I've watched this house for a couple of years now. It's been with, I guess, two developers besides, before Ms. Chan got the house. She's the only one that's stuck with it. One of the houses, like the gentleman said, is at least, is close to a hundred years old. Three days zoning regulations, and it was close to the road because back then you had horses and wagons. You didn't have cars. You didn't need one length, two lengths. You just needed a path. So I've seen her put a lot of money into the house. Everything she touched, it just, she added two more to it. I know she spent a lot of money, and I'm sure it's been quite a hardship on what she's been doing, but she has really been trying very hard, even with all the setbacks. The latest setback, there was no headroom, and the steps being a little too narrow to go up to the third floor where there was sleeping area. But, you know, in the old houses, everybody was shorter then quite a bit. So with the new regulations, so many people being so much taller, it doesn't conform. And I'd like to see anything she has a problem with to go through. I'd like to see anything she has a problem with to go through because she's really trying to bring it up to the code that she has to beautify the property. She's already put windows in, doors in, she's putting plywood on the outside sheathing, and she wants to put a heating system in, she's going through places from top to bottom. It'd certainly be a benefit to everybody in the neighborhood.
All right. What's your name and address, sir?
Jim Selsey. I live right next door at 300 Berkeley Road.
All right, thank you, Mr. Selsey. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of the application, Berkeley Road? Is there anyone in opposition to the application, 284 Berkeley Road? Hearing nothing further, I'm going to close the hearing on 284 Berkeley Road. Thank you, gentlemen. The next item that we have is number five. It's 229 Adley Road, map 4-9, parcel 3-6, petition of Michael and Rachel McDonald for variance of zoning regulations, section 5.2.4, to reduce the street line setback from 40 feet, currently 32.3 feet, proposing 32.3 feet to house and 28.1 feet to open front porch, and to reduce sideline setback from 15 feet, currently 52.3 feet, proposing 13.6 feet, permission to construct a one-story and two-story additions and open front porch, premises R3 zone. Attorney Fallon, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is John Fallon. I'm pleased to be representing Michael and Rachel McDonald, who are seated right here in the front row. It strikes me that the theme of my first two applications with you today are very similar. They involve great family neighborhoods and nice young families who are looking to stay there and maintain and start a family there. And such is the case with Michael and Rachel. They've resided there since they purchased the property in 2018, and it's always was their goal prior to that, to find a home in Fairfield. And they've come to love this neighborhood, their home, its proximity to Lake Mohegan, and the positive relationships they've established with their neighbors over the past five years. So having determined that this is the home that they want to stay in, they've decided to move forward with the proposed addition, as shown on the plans that we've submitted and that were prepared by, again, our architect, Ed Clemente, who is here today to answer any questions you might have. They're excited about the prospect of starting a family and raising their children in this very special neighborhood. In addition, in their case, both Michael and Rachel's moms are approaching 70 and have unfortunately had health issues in recent years, which have led to them spending more time with the McDonald's home on a far more regular and extended basis. That's a wonderful thing in many respects, but obviously the additional space that will be provided by this proposed addition will give them the comfort of providing for their parents when they're there to visit and obviously also provide them with the space that's needed as they contemplate raising a family here. So the proposal that they make is consistent, is consisting of a first-floor addition on the southerly side of the property, which will simply fill in an area of the first floor, as you can see on the plan, over which the second floor already projects. Thus, the existing home is already non-conforming to the street setback, as the call indicates, at 32.3 feet. And the first-floor addition, if you will, will square off that area so that it will maintain the same street back. There won't be any increase or encroachment in the existing street setback of 32.3 feet. On the northerly side of the property, we're proposing a two-car garage, replacing an existing one-car garage, and above the two-car garage, there'll be a family room, as shown on the plans. Now, the property is located in the R3 zone. It is a legally protected, pre-existing, non-conforming lot with respect to both lot area at 14,700 square feet and lot shape with a square of 98 feet. As you know, in that zone, the minimum lot area requirement is 20,000 square feet and the minimum square is 100 feet. It should be emphasized that notwithstanding the significant non-conforming status of the lot as to lot area, the McDonald's have designed this proposal so it will comply with the provisions of the regulations with regard to lot coverage and maximum floor area. Notwithstanding the fact that it's almost 25% less than the contemplated lot area and is protected as a pre-existing, non-conforming lot, lot coverage here after the addition is completed will be 13.5%, and obviously the zone allows 15%, and the building floor area will be 26% when 30% is allowed. So taking all those facts and looking at the statutory situation, we're seeking two variances here. One is to reduce the street line setback to 32.3 feet. As I indicated, however, the first-floor addition will not extend further into the street setback than the existing structure. A proposed porch, which will have significant aesthetic benefit to the property and is also, and is proposed here, we do seek a variance for the section to 28.1 feet, and this is requested only with regard to the porch. The porch has been very favorably received by the neighbors. It's a nice aesthetic element, as you can see. We're also asking for a variance of the side yard property line setback from 15 feet to 13.6 feet to accommodate the new functional two-car garage structure that will have the family room above it. You'll note that the lot square is 98 feet rather than 100 feet, so it's two feet non-conforming. And that relates, as I'll talk about in my closing remarks, directly to the request for a small 1.4 feet variance on the side yard setback to accommodate the two-car garage. And as I've said before, all other aspects of the zoning regulations, including coverage and total floor area, will be complied with. So looking at the statute, again, you have to determine, one, that what is proposed won't substantially affect the comprehensive zoning plan, and number two, that there are factors with regard to the property that establish a hardship basis for the granting of the variance. Again, with regard to the first aspect of the test, I cite the Eagan case, wherein the court has said that if the use to be allowed by a variance is consistent with other uses in the area and/or is a permitted use in the zone, then the first part of the test is met. That's certainly the case here. The granting of the variance is not going to change the use of the lot, which will remain a single-family home. Other than these variances for setbacks that we request, no other variances are sought. And in addition to that, the design as executed by Mr. Clemente harmonizes with the character of the neighborhood and represents, I think, a very significant aesthetic enhancement to the property and the surrounding area, and our abutting neighbors do agree with that. Michael and Rachel took the plans around and received the, I'll get that down, the enthusiastic endorsement of their plans from their neighbors. With regard to the hardship that you want to analyze here, clearly it comes from the fact that the existing McDonald's home is a legally protected, pre-existing, non-conforming structure with regard to the street setback from Adley Road. It was constructed in 1950 and is located 32.3 feet from the street line. The variance that we request herein, both for the second floor, a little fill-in-the-notch, and the porch, arise directly from the fact of the location of the existing, pre-existing, non-conforming structure. And on my material, I cite all those cases that state that in our Connecticut courts, the historic location of a legally protected, pre-existing, non-conforming structure creates a proper basis for finding a hardship, especially with regard to setbacks. Now, with regard to the side yard, in addition, there is the fact that the lot is a pre-existing, non-conforming lot as to shape. It is 98 feet rather than 100 feet, and as I said, that directly relates to the need for the setback variance because of the narrowness of the lot, which we asked for at 1.4 feet, from 15 feet to 13.6 feet. So we think there's obviously strong hardship basis here with regard to both the technical variances that we request. So in summary, the addition as proposed by the McDonald's will be attractive in design and harmonizes with the character of the neighborhood. It does represent, and our neighbors concur, a significant architectural enhancement to the property that benefits the neighborhood. The additional space will provide the McDonald's an opportunity to remain in their home and neighborhood, as they very much wish to do, as they look forward to raising a family and also addressing the needs of their parents. The legal hardship basis, again, is the pre-existing, non-conforming nature of the lot as to its width and also the existing and legally protected, pre-existing location, non-conforming location of the structure as it relates to the street setback. So be pleased to answer any questions that you might have from me or Mr. Clemente.
Thank you, Attorney Fallon. Board, have any questions on Adley, 229? We have another Adley coming up, 229 Adley. Is there anyone that would speak in favor of 229 Adley? Is there anyone that opposes 229 Adley? All right, hearing no comments, I'm going to close the hearing. Thank you very much, Attorney Fallon.
Thank you.
Our next item, number six, is 142 Moritz Place, map 7-7, parcel 5-9-2, petition of Tanya Kaplan for a variance of zoning regulations, section 5.2.4, to reduce the street line in sum of two sideline setbacks from 30 feet and 25 feet, currently 19.9 feet and 24.5 feet, proposing 19.9 feet and 24.5 feet, permission to construct two-story and second-floor addition, premises A zone. Scott?
Good afternoon. I am Tanya Sernera, formerly Tanya Kaplan, as it is on the deed of 142 Moritz Place. I'm here with my husband, Tom Sernera. We are here to apply for a setback allowance variance on a pre-existing, non-conforming lot. The proposed addition builds on top of the already existing blueprint of the house and will replace our porch and be two stories. With this extension, we'll be adding more space for our growing family. This will include two bedrooms, a bathroom, and a space for our children to play. Eight years ago, when I moved on to 142, I was a single young female who depended on her neighbors for their tools, lawnmowers, and frequent dinner invitations. I have watched their children grow, helped plan block parties, and have been celebrated by them with our own milestones. I promise I practiced this, practiced this. As my husband and I celebrated our son's second birthday this weekend with all of our neighbors in tow in our backyard, we turned to each other and said that we could never want it to leave Moritz Place. Couldn't imagine raising our family anywhere. Please help, please help make 142 our forever home and approve our variance. With representation, we submitted the petition with all of the signatures of our neighbors in favor of our addition. And in addition, I would like to submit copies of a letter in support from our adjacent neighbors for our addition as well.
And any further? Okay. The question doesn't mean that you have to say anything further, just not making sure. Any questions from Ms. Sernera? All right. Anyone that would speak in favor of the application? Moritz Place? Is there anyone in opposition to the application? 142 Moritz Place? I'm going to close the hearing on 142 Moritz Place. Thank you very much. Our next item that we have is number seven, which is 75 Cider Mill Lane, map 177, parcel 182, Epis and Frank, petition of Marissa and Robert Viola for a variance of zoning regulations, section 5.2.4.3, to reduce the rear setback for an accessory structure that is greater than 100 square feet, 40 feet, proposing 13.8 feet, permission to construct a one-story pool house, premises double-A zone, and I think they're remote. Okay, go ahead.
All right. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
So thank you, good afternoon. My name is Rob Viola and I live at 75 Cider Mill Lane with my wife and two kids. And as mentioned, we are requesting relief from the rear yard setback on our property, which is, I think, currently 40 feet, and we're proposing 13.8 to build in an accessory structure behind our pool, so pool house, can be done a sort. We are compliant with the side yard requirement, but are, based on the placement of the house, the garage, and the existing pool, we make it difficult to satisfy the rear yard requirement with any logical location. And so with the hardship that we're requesting, or requesting is twofold. One is based on the triangular nature of our lot. Like I said, it'd be very difficult to meet both simultaneously the side yard and the rear yard requirement and land the structure in a durable location. And then the second piece is the lot itself is non-conforming with respect to the overall size. And so the, again, the logical place to put it without impacting its functionality does require relief from the side, or the rear yard requirement. That's it. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Viola? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone in opposition to the application at 75 Cider Mill Lane? Pool house. What's that? Sorry, Mr. Viola, we have a question from our board, okay?
Yes, please.
Is your intention to make this, this pool house an accessory dwelling unit? It has a full bathroom and a, almost a full kitchen?
You cut out, you asked if there was a question to do with the pool house?
Did you hear the question, Ms. Viola?
I did not, I apologize. It was something about the usage of the pool house?
Yeah, I have a question. Is your intention to make this pool house an accessory dwelling unit?
In terms of livable space, no. It would just be a great room, recreation. The intent is to put a bathroom, counter, sink, but not to have it be a dwelling unit.
So there's no cooking equipment going in?
No.
No, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, I'll redo. Anyone that would speak in favor of the application, Cider Mill Lane? Is there anyone in opposition to the application? 75 Cider Mill Lane? All right, I'm going to close the hearing on 75 Cider Mill Lane. Thank you, Ms. Viola.
Great, thank you.
Our next item that we have is number eight, 111 Adley Street, Adley Road, map 4-7, parcel 322, petition of FGB2 LLC for a variance of zoning regulations, section 5.2.4, to reduce the street line setback from 40 feet, currently 30.2 feet, proposing 32 feet, permission to construct a new two-and-a-half-story, single-family dwelling, premises R3. Go ahead.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Jennifer Tierney. I am the architect for the project at 111 Adley Road. And to start, I'd like to point out that the property is in the R3 zone, which the minimum lot size for that zone is 20,000 square feet. The hardship here is threefold, the first being that the lot is an undersized, a non-conforming lot for an R3 zone. It's only at 13,468 square feet, so that is 67% of the conforming size. The minimum square for this zone is 100 feet. Here, we only have a lot at 90, and the lot frontage also is 100 feet, and again, for this lot, it's reduced to 90. For the board, if you were to look at the survey, you can see that the rear of the yard, the geography does quickly step off in terms of the contour lines. You can see that it is steep. The existing house that is on the structure is 30.2 feet off of the front lot line. We are, while the proposal is still a non-conforming condition in terms of front yard setback, we are improving that situation by almost two feet. And again, as you've heard, because it's a popular day for And again, as you've heard, because it's a popular day for Adley Road, you've heard about the neighborhood and, again, it's family neighborhood. And to actually, again, you know, this is more of my opinion, but to move the house back from the road would actually change the context of the neighborhood more than keeping it, you know, closer to the road. That would actually change the way in which the neighborhood feels. In terms of the rest of the design, absolutely everything else is conforming. So that is the one portion of relief that we are looking to get approval for. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. Do you need, the board have any questions? Is there anyone that wants to speak in favor of the application? 111. Is there anyone in opposition to the application? 111. All right, I'm going to close the hearing. Thank you, Ms. Tierney.
Thank you for your time.
And number nine is 15 Catona Drive, map 76, parcel 250. Petition of Catfield LLC for a variance of the zoning regulations, section 12.4.18. To allow residential use to be located on the first floor and to exceed 50% of the building's total floor area and section 12.7.6.4. To reduce the setback from an adjacent resident district from 30 feet, currently 24.99 feet, proposing 24.99 feet. Permission to modify the existing commercial building and convert to 100% residential use premises DCD zone. Tierney Fallon, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is John Fallon. I'm an attorney here in Fairfield, and I'm pleased to be representing Catfield LLC. With me today, working vigorously to set things up, is our architect, Mr. Alex Esposito. Catfield has owned this property since 1989. You may be familiar with it. There are some existing photographs that Alex will go through. They've been committed since owning it all these years to managing it in a professional and efficient manner. And during that 34 years, as I think will be documented by the evolution of their thinking on this property, they've also endeavored to maintain good relationships with both their commercial and residential neighbors. I tell you nothing you don't already know about the fact that market conditions over the last few years, including the challenges of the pandemic, have had significant impact on the commercial real estate market, most especially as it relates to the demand for office space. These impacts have been ongoing, and they required Catfield over the last year or two to explore alternative uses for the building and the property. It has been determined by us after significant investigation and consideration that residential use is highly preferable in that it will provide an appropriate opportunity to upgrade the exterior of the building, as you'll hear from Mr. Esposito in a minute, but most importantly as well, provide an appropriate transition between the commercial district of Blackrock Turnpike and the nearby residential neighborhood. Now, as we shared with the neighbors, and I'll talk about that in a minute, initially, when we were going through this process, we were approached by numerous developers who felt this would make a very desirable and appropriate location for an affordable housing development pursuant to Connecticut general statutes 8-3. The options that were presented to us included a four-and-a-half-story structure containing 32 units and a five-and-a-half-story structure with 40 units. After consideration, however, and in light of the long-term relationship and involvement that they've had with this property, it was determined by Catfield that it didn't wish to pursue such an intense development of the property, even though the state law would permit it. Thus, as an alternative, Catfield was diligently with Mr. Esposito and the rest of our development team on a proposal where by utilizing the existing structure and doing significant architectural enhancements to its exterior, we will modify the structure so that we can have 18 luxury units submitted as part of this application. These would consist of four two-bedroom units, two studio units, and 12 one-bedroom units. To accommodate that, we are proposing 44 parking spaces. We feel that will be deemed compliant by the Town Plan and Zoning Commission. Obviously, if you have to approve, if you do approve this application, we hope you will, we then have to go to the Town Plan and Zoning Commission. Under section 28.6.1, as you know, with a project like this, a residential development in the commercial zone, the P&amp;Z can in fact reduce the parking requirement by up to 50%. We're not looking for anything like that. The parking requirement un-reduced is 54, so half of that would be 27. We're proposing 44 spaces. And we've obviously had conversations with staff. We feel the commission will find that to be, in light of the unit and the unit mix, appropriate. But that's for the P&amp;Z. What we ask you to consider with regard to this matter is that we believe very much that the utilization of the property for residential use will be a very good use for the neighborhood, will also be one that will provide an opportunity to upgrade the property and provide a wonderful transition on this piece between the existing commercial area and the residential area. Before I introduce Alex, I will tell you that we reached out to the entire group mailing list that you, as a board, gave notice to. And we wrote to all those people independently, and we sent this letter, which you can see. And at the end of that letter, as you can also see, we invited the entire neighborhood to a meeting, which we did in fact hold. And there are only about seven people who came. That we considered obviously to be a good sign in the sense that we laid out to the people exactly what we were doing, provided them plans, and seven people came. I do not intend to speak for those seven people. I don't know if any of them are here today, but the impression that we strongly received at that meeting was that they very much endorsed the approach that we were taking, both with regard to the avoidance of an 8-30G application and with the sensitive way we were approaching regeneration of this building by utilizing the existing structure without intensifying the structural use of the property. So before I talk about the legal underpinnings, I'd like to call on Alex Esposito, our architect. He'll give you a brief overview of the existing site, which you're probably familiar with, and most importantly, our plans with regard to this proposal.
Interesting building has two fire stepcases, elevator, which would remain. We're going to reduce the window openings that are there now, and that's part of motivation with the number of units in the mix. Here's the plan. Footprint is virtually the same, the only change being, whereas now, what used to call growing up in New York, the stoop, we can create a little bit of an entry portico, covering portico, and add a ramp to this, which would give them a sense of an entry. We get rid of this very dated, mansawned roof. Instead, at Jingle, put a pitch roof above. In deference to our residential neighbors, we went with what's referred to as a Dutch gate on the left. This is what we see in this building facing our residential neighbors. And they have another 35 feet to them. So we won't have a, we won't have a thing that needs. We told them this, we have the four two-bedroom units, three-bedroom apartments. Here's our little entry portico. Regarding the site, it was pointed out by our magistrate architect, I think it's with us being a ZIM, Eric Williams, that the existing parking was not conforming. There are 68 spaces on the site. You see it's largely paved. So we're going to bring the parking, we're reducing that down to 44 spaces, bring the parking up to standards. And of course, in doing that, we add a couple of green spaces, we require trees within the parking space. We're going to have one-direction drives. Like that? John?
Yes, thank you.
Very much.
I'll move these a little bit so I don't have to teak over everybody. Thanks. Okay, so with regard to the technical underpinnings of the application, the property is located in the design commercial district. In order to facilitate the variance, the development, we seek a variance of section 12.4.4.16 to increase the percentage of residential use in the structure from 50% to 100% and to allow residential use on the ground floor of the building. We're also seeking a variance of section 12.7.6.2 in order to allow the side property line adjacent to the residential district to remain at 24.99 feet. It should be pointed out that the existing, in the existing condition, it is based upon the existing footprint of the building, and it will not be enlarged and the setback in the residential zone boundary will not be decreased. I'd also want to point out that in designing this, I think, again, we've taken a more modest and restrictive approach. With regard to lot coverage, it's going to increase minimally from 24.26% to 24.87%. That's a total increase in coverage of 236 square feet, when the zone allows, as you know, coverage of up to 75%. Similarly, with regard to maximum floor area, that's going to be at 63%, well below what the zone allows, that being 150%. The building will be compliant with height requirements. It'll be two-and-a-half stories at 37 feet, again, very much in character with the other structures in and adjacent to the district and well under the allowance of the district of four stories and 40 feet. So when you look at the legal underpinnings with regard to the application, you again want to look at Connecticut general statutes 8.6, and there's two matters you must make findings on. One, that it does not substantially affect in a negative manner the zoning plan, comprehensive zoning plan, and number two, that there are elements with regard to hardship that satisfy the granting of this variance. As I pointed out again in my material, I cite the Eagan case for the proposition that if the use to be made of the property after a variance is granted is a permitted use in the zone, then that satisfies the first part of the test. In addition, residential uses here do in fact abut the proposed residential development of this parcel and is consistent with the adjacent residential uses, and I think provides a very appropriate transition between the commercial district and the residential properties that are abutted. Again, we received, we probably sent letters out to how many hundreds of some people, all people within 250 feet, and to date, we received no negative comment. And the comment that we have received has been positive, because if you know this neighborhood, and I think you do, you were probably out there, you know that it's off of Blackrock Turnpike, but basically it abuts similar multifamily condominium-style communities that have been there for many years. So that when we looked at what we wanted to do here, we determined that we wanted to do something that would be consistent with the neighborhood and provide an upgrade in terms of this building, which was tired and obviously needed aesthetic improvement. And under Alex's direction, we've been able to do that. This is a very similar situation, when we get to the hardship argument, to situations you've seen, some of which I've brought before to you, some of which some of my colleagues have recently, be it applications on Sherman Street, applications on Thorpe Street, where in that particular instance, the utilization of a mixed-use development was deemed to be not as compatible and beneficial to the neighborhood as would be a waiver of these specific provisions so the total residential use could be established. If we did a mixed-use development here, we could do a much larger building, far more intense in terms of the residential components, and on the first floor, I mean, we could have a beauty shop, a delicatessen, anything like that. Nothing wrong with those things. But if you look at this particular site, we hope you'd agree that, you know, this 18-unit enhancement architecturally is just what this property benefits from. And considering alternatives, be it, you know, permitted alternatives under the design commercial district or an 8-30G, it's highly superior. And that raises the essence of the hardship here, because in, under these circumstances and the unique location of the property, the implementation of the regulations that we seek a variance of does create hardship. Not only to us, we feel strongly to the entire neighborhood. So we think this is a great project. We know we have to take planning and zoning. We're very confident that with the neighbors' endorsement, which we think we have, they're going to be very pleased by this. And when I look, I just want to look at Alex's work to get inspired. But this is such an enhancement to what's there now. With all due respect to the current structure, which is rather aged, that you can see why the neighbors would be saying, wow, you know, I'm going to change the height. You've been careful in terms of scaling it back with the Dutch colonial roof. It's the kind of project I like to do, because you don't have an overreaching type of situation where somebody's trying to maximize the profit, maximize the, you've got a local, long-rooted industry in this neighborhood developer who is saying, I want to do something that I think is sensitive to the neighborhood. But the first step of doing that is we need your blessing by way of the granting of the variances that we seek, which are similar to variances, not that you're bound by precedent, because you're not, but which in other situations, under similar circumstances, you found proper to grant, where you felt that full residential use of the property, based upon the character of the surrounding neighborhood, was better than a mixed-use proposing. And that's what we're asking you to consider and do here. So Alex and I would be pleased to answer any questions that you might have. Otherwise, we hope you'll favorably consider this so we can move forward to planning and zoning.
Thank you, Trent Fallon. The board have any questions? Yes, Jane?
So I understand this is not an 8-30G project, but did you consider putting any affordable units?
Well, there will be. The regulations require that in any development of 10 or more, then 10% of the units have to be affordable. So rounding that up, there'll be two affordable units.
Brian, did you have a question?
Yeah, Jane effectively asked my question. I was interested to know if they were making any effort to put in affordable units.
And there will be. There is a requirement.
Yep, I just, I get very, I'm over people using 830G as a threat as opposed to an advantage to our community, but I do appreciate them at least meeting the expectation of 10%.
Right. And as one who brings 830G applications from time to time to the community, it's not my intention to make 830G a villain here. I think 830G plays a very important role in our town and in our state. I do feel, however, that regard to this particular piece of property and its location in a very transitional area, and with the residential use is so proximate, this is a very good solution to the regeneration of this property, which is obviously in need of that, so.
Which units will be the affordable ones? The bedroom or the studios or which?
Well, I think the commission is going to require that there be, you know, a, what's the word I'm looking for? There has to be consistency. I can't make the two studios the affordable units. So I'm just looking at what my unit mix is here. What did I say it was?
Two bedrooms, two studios, one two-bedroom.
I would imagine that the zoning is certainly one of the one-bedrooms, because there's 12 one-bedrooms, so I would assume one of those would need to be affordable. And then the question, in terms of the second affordable unit, we'd have to discuss with the commission and the staff and whether their preference would be that the second affordable unit be one of the two bedrooms or one of the studios, or would they prefer the two affordable units both be one bedrooms? So we'll work through that with the staff, and then ultimately, the commission will decide. But if I had to guess, I think they'll want to see some symmetry between the total number of units and the two affordable units. I can't just make the two studios affordable.
Any other questions? All right, is there anyone that wants to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone in opposition to the application? All right, I'm going to close the hearing on 15 Catona Drive. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Number 10 is 15 Number ten is Fifty Three Unqua Place, map one-eight-zero, parcel two-three-five, petition of Jaco Enterprises LLC for a variance of zoning regulations, Section twelve point seven point six point one and twelve point seven point six point two, to reduce the street line and sideline setback from ten feet to ten feet, currently five point three feet and three point eight feet, proposing five point one feet and five point eight feet, permission to construct an open front porch and third-floor dormers with rear firescape, premises, CDD zone. Oh, I'll come up.
Thank you for your time today. My name's Camille Jacomaza, and I'm here on behalf of Fifty Three Unqua Place in Fairfield. It's owned by my husband and I. We wish to construct two third-floor dormers and a new covered front porch. We're utilizing the existing footprint of the building. The, the building Fifty Three Unqua Place was constructed in nineteen oh four, and it's nonconforming to the setbacks and parking requirements. So our hardship is that the building's very outdated, and it really needs to be brought up today to today's building codes. We wish to reduce the commercial use and convert the second and third floors into one apartment on top, and that will reduce the parking demand for the property by five The front porch, which will be the entrance to the commercial space, will provide relief for foot traffic coming into that commercial space and for the tenants, and basically for the customers of the commercial space. We wish to soften the front elevation, which will be very aesthetic, and it will allow a way to enter the building that fits into the look of the downtown area. And if you notice its proximity to the train station, Unqua Place oftentimes is the first road that you enter out of Fairfield when you get off the train station. So it's our goal to keep the charm and aesthetic better in line with the town. We're also building the stairs into the porch as opposed to out into the, to the walkway. So our goal is to create a pleasant arrival to the building for the street and for the town, and we hope that you approve it.
Ms. Jacomaza, does anyone have any questions, Ms. Jacomaza? All right. Is there anyone that wants to speak in favor of the application, Fifty Three Unqua Place? Is there anyone in opposition, Fifty Three Unqua Place? Okay, I'm going to close the hearing on Fifty Three Unqua Space. Thank you, Ms. Jacomaza. I'm going to close the public hearing. We're going to take a ten-minute break, and we'll reconvene our working session in ten minutes. Call back to order, Fairfield Zoning Board of Appeals, Order two thousand and twenty-three. We're reconvening our working session. We have ten items to take care of today. Our first item is going to be Forty-Six Sleepy Hollow. Attorney Fallon presented that for the Dafinas, to construct two-story addition with attic. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Just going to be quiet now? Brian? Okay, all right. Discussion? Discussion on Sleepy Hollow.
Getting this one out of the way early. It's a de minimis request, I feel. I think it's a right there.
All right, so we're going to file the same order as if you're here in the room. All right, Brian? So you're at the end of the table, virtually, and, okay. So any other discussion? All right, bring it to a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Brian? I'd say yes. Yes, that's granted. Number two, Fifty One Nichols Street, petition to Strickland, Ms. Strickland presented her application, added to second-floor addition attic, and make the home team office compliant. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Jane, is there a second?
Second.
Katie? Discussion?
Yeah.
Corner lot.
Yes.
Super small lot. All right, bring it to a vote, Katie?
Yes.
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 Brian? Yes, for Brian, and yes for me. That's granted. Number three is Three Sedan Terrace, petition to Pacini, Ms. Pacini presented the application, assisted by Ms. Chio, and this is to construct one-story addition open front porch. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Terry, is there a second? Thank you, Jane. Remember, this was what, fire damage and, you know, rehabbing and making the front porch code compliant and safe. Any other discussion?
We need to study on the purchase, but that's ultimately what we're going to make our decision.
No, and Pacini got to it, and Ms. Chio gave him an assist. So I think we're good on that. Katie?
Yes.
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 Yes from Brian? Yes. And number four is Two Eighty-Four Berkeley Road, petition was Chan. Mr. Reber presented the application for, and this is to construct a dormer in the attic, the two buildings on one lot, and the variance for that being set up there. And we heard from the Celsia in favor of it as well, a neighbor. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Katie? Discussion?
I'd move to approve based on the history lesson we received about the horses and the height of humans back in the day. I think it's an easy request.
We've seen the property a few times, different variants.
Yeah.
And, you know, it, it, Chan seems to be the one that's really pushing it to develop it properly, rehab it properly, so she needs a little assistance. And it is a very unique situation for even, even for that area, where there's a lot of open multifamily homes in that area. So bring it to a vote.
Yes.
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 Brian? Yes? Yes. Number five, Two Twenty-Nine Hadley Road, the McDonald's, Attorney Fallon presented this for them, to construct one-story, two-story additions and open front porch. Entertain a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Jane. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Terry. All right, discussion?
I'd read it all to nonconforming lot. They're only asking for about a foot and a half.
Yeah, you have the square undersized.
And here you're putting there is you don't have a backdoor neighbor that we were out either, because you got Lake Mohegan back there.
Bring to a vote?
Yes.
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 Brian? I'd say yes. I'd say yes. Granted. Number six, One Forty-Two Maritz Place, Sanera, she presented her own application, assisted by her husband, and this is to construct two-story second-floor addition. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane. All right, discussion?
All right, bring to a vote.
Yes.
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 Brian? Yes? And yes for me, that's granted. Number seven, Seventy-Five Sidemill Lane, Viola, Mr. Viola presented the application. This is for the pool, pool house, and they're, you know, wanting the, the rear setback of the pool house. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Terry. Is there a second?
Thank you, Jane.
Thank you, Jane. You have three more opportunities to get your voice heard on a motion or a second.
I've taken my shots, Mr. Chairman.
Discussion?
I think it's, I think it's reasonable, and they did what they could to position it the right way.
And that, that back end, you have the river over there anyway, for that, where that setback is. All right, bring to a vote.
Yes.
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 Brian says yes. Yes, that's granted. Number eight, One Eleven Hadley Road, Ms. Tierney presented the application, FGV two LLC, to construct a new two-and-a-half-story single-family dwelling. Entertain a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Okay, second?
Second.
Terry? Discussion?
It actually reduces the nut.
Yeah. Yeah, it's right at the end of Saddle Brook, and a lot of the houses, close, 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 and they moved back, because they changed that whole zone in the sixties or seventies. So bring it to a vote.
Yes.
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 Brian? Yes? Say yes? Granted. Number nine, the Sixty Catona Drive, Catfield LLC, Attorney Fallon presented this to convert the, the hybrid commercial, that building with residential to a hundred percent residential. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Terry, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Repeating what somebody said, because they were going to do it before, it's really not welcome to here, like what we could have done would be awful, so except that, but in this case, this is the decision, and they are required to provide minimum two affordable units, since they would materially provide, but.
It is a good area for that.
We have it.
Yes.
Yeah, it does fit having a hundred percent residential in that area. All right, bring to a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Charlamagne says yes. Say yes. Granted. Number ten, Fifty Three Unqua Place, Jaco Enterprises, Ms. Jacomaza presented the application, added to construct open front porch, former and firescape. Entertain a motion to approve.
Let's look at first.
Jane, and is there a second?
Okay, here, we start.
You started talking first, but you can spit it all out, but I'm giving you the credit at the start. Okay, discussion?
It can only be an improvement on that.
Yeah.
Right. Tough lot.
It's going to be nice.
It is.
All right, bring to a vote, Katie?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and yes for me. That's also granted. I'm going to close the full hearing. Twenty Quarterfield, thank you, everyone, and see anyone who wants to join us in September.
Thanks, everybody.